Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 12th, 2014 meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. This is a regularly scheduled business meeting. And before we get started tonight, I would like for you to join me in a moment of silence in memory of Ms. Mary Lisa O'Brien. Thank you. Tonight, our presentation of colors is by the J.M. Robinson High School ROTC, Junior ROTC Cadets. The cadets are Captain Tyler Forget, Captain Andrew Huffman, First Lieutenant Kelly Brown, and Cadet Technical Sergeant Dylan Long. Flute players, don't leave yet.[256.56][256.56](Laughter.) Okay, before we dismiss our flute players, we wanted to recognize you and properly give you a nice round of applause for a job well done.[272.89][272.89](Applause.) The "Star Spangled Banner" was performed by the Concord High School overtones woodwind choir under the direction of Mr. Christopher Wilson. Mr. Wilson, thank you very much for being here. The choir members are Madeline Colby, Haven Galagos, Kaitlyn Roach, Anna McDonald, Jamie Williams, and Becca Henderson. Again, thank you very much for being here. One of the great things that we get to experience (Applause), one of the great things we get to experience is performances just like that for the "Star Spangled Banner," and it's very moving. So, thank you very much. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention that our JRTC cadets were under the direction of Lieutenant Colonel Scott A. Rose, United States Air Force retired, and Master Sergeant Wayne Altrum, United States Air Force retired. So, we thank J.M. Robinson's JRTC cadets for doing the color guard. And with that, board members, we're going to move on and set our agenda, 4.1, and I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, then the agenda has been set, and we'll move to Section 5, to our recognitions. And what a great night we had with our Teachers of the Year and our little party that we had before. And we will welcome Ms. Glenda Jones, and Dr. Marion Bish, and Mr. Chris Adams to the podium for our presentation of the Teacher of the Year.
All right, good evening. We are indeed honored to celebrate our Teachers of the Year for Cabarrus County Schools. And what I'm going to ask each of them to do as I call their name is to just come across the front and stand, and I'd like to ask the audience to hold their applause until the end, and then we will have a special recognition at the very end. At this time, I'd like to ask Amy Witten, AT Allen Elementary School, to come all the way in. Melissa Buchanan, Bethel Elementary School. Shelby Davis, Beverly Hills Elementary School. Leah Samuelson, Boger Elementary School. Pamela Deal, Cox Mill Elementary School. Pamela Hayes, Cox Mill High School. Karen Holler, Winkler Middle School. Sharon Ambrose, Harris Road Middle. Joshua Van Esseltine, Hickory Ridge Middle. David Perizy, J.M. Robinson High School. Amy Harding, Mary Frances Wall Center. Wendy Duke, Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Kelly Williams, Mount Pleasant High School. Marnie Stoker, Mount Pleasant Middle School. Laura Bryson, Northwest Cabarrus High School. Kurt Lawrence, Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Emily Waddington, Patriots Elementary. Elaine Johnson, Pitt School Road Elementary. All right, Ms. Jenny Cruz, Arbrown McAllister Elementary. Mary Price, Rocky River Elementary. Courtney Fur, Royal Oaks Elementary. Patricia Woodcock, WR Odell Elementary. Lisa Haney, WM Irvin Elementary. Katherine Norman, Weddington Hills Elementary. Karen Von Claire, Wyancoff Elementary. Janice Witherspoon, Wolf Meadow Elementary. Sarah Collins. Now, these last folks are our finalists for the Teacher of the Year, and we have Ms. Sarah Collins, Coltron Webb Elementary School. Chris White, Hickory Ridge High School. Nancy Cap, J.N. Freeze Magnet School. And our Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year, Allison Hahn, Central Cabarrus High School. And I am going to ask that they just stand here for a few more minutes of recognition because at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Chris Adams with SunTrust Bank. And Mr. Chris Adams has a monetary donation that he would like to make to our finalists and to our Teacher of the Year. And just let me say that we are so proud of each and every one of you. You are why we do what we do each day when we serve the students of Cabarrus County Schools and the students of North Carolina. So, thank you for what you do. And this is Mr. Chris Adams.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And first, who's from Harrisburg here? I just want to let you guys know that my wife and I have, we're actually, our fifth child is due May 24th, so we are really working to keep you guys staffed up there, so (Laughter) you know, so yeah, the Adams household is quite busy. But you know, I, it's funny, you know, the, I think back to, you know, when I was in school, and I can't believe the relationships that I still have with my teachers from where I'm from. And you know, so much to the point, actually, so my cousin starts first base for the St. Louis Cardinals. So, on the side, you know, other than being a banker, I also love baseball. So, but on the side, I actually, I give, on his fan page, of course, we give free stuff away. So, this year, the, a grand prize winner of a signed bat was my high school teacher of geometry and trigonometry from high school. And it's funny, you know, I haven't spoken with her in, gosh, when did I graduate? I don't even know, what is it, 25 years now? It's coming up on 25 years. So, but, but the funny thing is, you know, as we connected, she remembered, she remembered me, and she remembered everything about me. So, when I actually connected with her to let her know that she was the winner, she, in high school, they used to call me Smiley, because I, she did anyways. And so, that was her email back to me, "Hey, Smiley, glad to see that you're doing really well." So, I want to thank you guys because, you know, I think, I often say that our teachers, you know, are the backbone of our society. So, you know, I want to thank you for what you guys do. You guys mean a lot, and more than you'll ever know. So, here at SunTrust, we really do believe, in fact, this is my second event today, we believe in giving back. Today, we sponsored the Cabarrus YMCA golfing event in the morning, and then over here tonight. So, you know, we believe that a strong community, you know, makes a strong bank as well. So, but I have some gifts to give here, which is really cool. So, our finalists won $250 apiece, and then, of course, the Teacher of the Year won $1,000, you know, from us too. So, that's kind of cool take home, so, and well deserved. So, thank you. So, the first winner is Chris White. So, Chris, congratulations.[731.04][731.04](Applause.) And next is Brian Floyd. How about Sarah Collins? Nancy Cap. And of course, the grand prize winner of the $1,000 was Allison Hahn. So, Allison, congratulations. Put that back on. So, thank you, guys.
And I'm going to ask that our Teachers of the Year turn around and come through and shake hands and let the Board of Education thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you very much, Glenda, and thank you, Chris Adams and SunTrust. We certainly do greatly appreciate it. There's probably a funny comment somewhere in the fact that his nickname is Smiley, and he has his fifth child on the way.[921.04][921.04](Laughter.) Okay. We'll move on to 5.2, our Impact Through Education, and we'll ask Ms. Ronnie Boone to come to the podium.
Need to put my glasses on so I can see. Good evening. Tonight, we will celebrate our honorees for the final Impact Through Education Awards for the 2013-2014 school year. We will be recognizing students and staff from Mount Pleasant Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. And before we get started, I would like to just say a very big thank you and heartfelt thank you to Concord Printing for sponsoring these awards for us this school year as well as last year. We certainly appreciate their support and look forward to our continued partnership. Now, on to the awards. We'll begin with students and staff at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School administrative team to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Stand on the, yeah, right there, that's good, thank you. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School is McKenna Buckwell. Would McKenna and her family please come forward? McKenna is a 5th grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She's an avid reader and loves to write stories. She's been honored with the Local Young Authors Award for the past two years, and this year, she was chosen for state recognition for this program. School staff members say McKenna is always kind to others, she's willing to lend a helping hand, she has a positive attitude, and a bright smile at all times. She's always respectful and responsible. She's a smart young lady who will be successful in all of her endeavors. She's a hard worker and takes on any and every opportunity that is presented to her. Outside of school, McKenna is very active in her church. She's participated in Bible quizzing for the past five years at the local and state level. She also participates in acrobats, cheer dance, competition dance, hip-hop, jazz, tap, and tumble, and has been doing this for the past six years. She won the Jazz Award in 2010. She is a lover of all types of pets, but especially her cats, dogs, and guinea pigs. She loves hanging out with her family and friends in her spare time. Congratulations, McKenna, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary is Jonathan Deal. Would Jonathan and his family please come forward? Jonathan is also a 5th grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. School staff members describe Jonathan as cooperative, hardworking, and compassionate. He always lends a helping hand to students and teachers whenever needed. He's very respectful, and he is a very respectful and responsible student at Mount Pleasant Elementary. He is constantly striving to do his best and to help others. He is extremely well-mannered and polite to his fellow students, his teachers, and other members of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School family. He would give someone the shirt off his back. He is always considerate of others and has the best manners. Many students at Mount Pleasant Elementary work on a "make a difference" project, but Jonathan is continuing to work beyond requirements and expectations because he genuinely wants to do so. Jonathan is an active member of Red Cross Baptist Church, Catawba Valley Harvest Association. He enjoys fishing, hunting, and other outdoor activities. He also enjoys playing baseball, football, and basketball for local leagues. Congratulations, Jonathan, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree is Mr. Rob Shladinsky. Would Rob Shladinsky and his family please come forward? Mr. Shladinsky is the technology facilitator at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Staff members say Rob made an impact on education as soon as he walked in the door of the school. He brought the school out of the dark ages of technology and into the 21st century. He continues to provide the staff and teachers with the needed technology tools to be more efficient in their work at school. He's always looking for creative programs for the students to use and integrate technology into their curriculum. Rob has produced several videos regarding safety in and around school, and he involves the students in those productions. He also produces the school's morning news with 5th grade students as the anchors. He creates the school yearbook each year and always comes up with new ways to make it better and involve more students. He can be pulled 100 different directions, teaching students in the lab, adding new technology, troubleshooting, teaching teachers about new technology, producing the morning news, and whatever else comes along technology-wise, but he will always do what it takes to get the job done. In the words of Vanilla Ice (Laughter), "If there's a problem, yo, he'll solve it."[1396.04][1396.04](Laughter.) Rob is the best. Outside of school, Rob plays drums for a Christian contemporary band, Elijah's Rain, which is based out of Mooresville. The band just recorded four songs in a Charlotte studio and hope to distribute it on iTunes sometime this summer. Congratulations, Rob, and thank you for making an Impact Through Education at Mount Pleasant And I just want to make the disclaimer that I do not write the scripts.[1496.83][1496.83](Laughter.) Our final honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School is Ms. Sherri Fur. Would Ms. Fur and her family please come forward? Ms. Fur is a custodian at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Staff members say she is a vital member of the school community. She goes above and beyond to make sure that students have a safe and clean environment in which to learn. She is a positive role model for students and shows a genuine interest in their learning. Mrs. Fur is an excellent custodian. This is more than a job to her. The children and staff are her extended family. She has the students', parents', staff, and school in mind when she plans her duties. She has a personal relationship with the staff and students and puts everyone else's needs before her own. Mrs. Fur is reliable and dependable and willing to help whenever needed. She is a true asset to the school. Congratulations, Mrs. Fur, and thank you for making it an Impact Through Education Next, we will recognize students and staff from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. And I'd like to invite any members of the, here he is (Laughs), come on a little closer in, right there is good, there you go. Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School this evening is Kathleen Cruz Sorosa. Would Kathleen and her family please come forward? Cat, sorry. I'm sorry, it's Kathleen, sorry. Kathleen has been an outstanding student during all three years at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She is described as the epitome of a mature and self-directed learner. Kathleen is a student who often stays after class to ask questions that go beyond the curriculum. She's kind, caring, and compassionate toward others in all situations. Her teachers describe her as "the most cheerful, friendly, and kind student I've ever taught." She never seems to have a bad day, and she's the kind of person that always asks how your day has been and makes you feel better the second she walks in the room. Another teacher said she's dedicated not only to her education, but to her character as well. She's always a go-to person who helps to motivate and lead others. And yet another teacher said she's energetic in class and consistently asks probing questions. She is someone who wants to learn and is always respectful to her classmates. And finally, another teacher said she is one of the sweetest students I have ever met. She accepts the challenges that are given to her and displays a curiosity that is refreshing. Congratulations, Kathleen, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is Vernon Nelson. Would Vernon and his family please come forward? Would Ms. Wilmot and her family please come forward? Ms. Wilmot has served Northwest Cabarrus Middle School for the past 25 years. She has taught English Language Arts to 6th, 7th, and 8th graders during this time. She is an expert reading specialist who diligently works to help students improve their reading ability. Her students consistently demonstrate strong growth on the reading EOGs. She has been given the nickname Mrs. Northwest Middle because of the enormous amount of programs she leads and her commitment to the school. She has led the school's Student Council for the past 25 years. In addition, she has been instrumental in organizing the school's after-school program where teachers provide tutoring and extra support to at-risk students. Teachers describe her as someone who has always gone above and beyond for the staff and students. She gives up an enormous amount of personal time and works for the good of all students. Another teacher said she is dedicated to the students of this school down to the marrow in her bones. She has taught me to plan purposefully, prepare prayerfully, proceed positively, and pursue persistently. Principal Farrar describes her as a tireless worker who is passionate about her students and her school. Mrs. Wilmot is retiring at the end of this year and will be greatly missed. The school had to create a team of at least five teachers to take over all of her responsibilities at the school. Mrs. Wilmot is well-deserving of this award for she has made a tremendous impact on the overall school community at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She will be sorely missed. Congratulations. And our final honoree from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School this evening is Mrs. Rhonda Weaver. Would Mrs. Weaver and her family please come forward? Mrs. Weaver has served Northwest Cabarrus Middle School for the past 25 years. She has taught English Language Arts to 6th, 7th, and 8th graders during this time. She is an expert reading specialist who diligently works to help students improve their reading ability. Her students consistently demonstrate strong growth on the reading EOGs. She has been given the nickname Mrs. Northwest Middle because of the enormous amount of programs she leads and her commitment to the school. She has led the school's Student Council for the past 25 years. In addition, she has been instrumental in organizing the school's after-school program where teachers provide tutoring and extra support to at-risk students. Teachers describe her as someone who has always gone above and beyond for the staff and students. She gives up an enormous amount of personal time and works for the good of all students. Another teacher said she is dedicated to the students of this school down to the marrow in her bones. She has taught me to plan purposefully, prepare prayerfully, proceed positively, and pursue persistently. Principal Farrar describes her as a tireless worker who is passionate about her students and her school. Mrs. Wilmot is retiring at the end of this year and will be greatly missed. The school had to create a team of at least five teachers to take over all of her responsibilities at the school. Mrs. Wilmot is well-deserving of this award for she has made a tremendous impact on the overall school community at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She will be sorely missed. Congratulations. And our final honoree from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School this evening is Mrs. Rhonda Weaver. Would Mrs. Weaver and her family please come forward? Mrs. Weaver has served Northwest Cabarrus Middle School as a treasurer for seven years. She has a reputation for excellence, receiving awards for the past two years from the Finance Department for excellence in financial accountability standards. Mrs. Weaver has the unique balance of organization, resourcefulness, strength, and compassion. Staff members describe her as one who is very gracious when they make mistakes. In other words, she does not make you feel bad when you mess up. Other staff members say she's always courteous, hard-working, and goes the extra mile for us all. She helps during any kind of situation. She sees the good in all staff, and she never loses her cool. Her principal, Mr. Farrar, describes her as the consummate professional who can handle any unexpected challenge presented to her. She has an attitude of excellence that reaches an entirely different level. She is truly the most trustworthy person I have ever met. Mrs. Weaver is one of the most valuable people at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and we congratulate her on receiving this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Before we move on, I wanted to recognize Alicia Mason. Alicia, I see you in the back. She's our SRO at Hickory Ridge Middle School, and we're very thankful that you're here tonight, and we appreciate all you do out at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Okay, board members, we're going to move on to 5.3, the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we'll have Dr. Barry Shepherd, and we're going to have a substitute in Mr. Lynn Schu, and also Glenda Jones. So tell us about our Teacher of the Month.
All right, Mr. Chairman and board members, first things first, before we begin, we do want to extend our continued thanks to Mr. Vaughn. I know in his absence tonight, Mr. Schu is standing in, but we do want to thank community partners such as Hillbush Ford for their continued support and their sponsorship of this wonderful program honoring our teachers. The Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Mary Price. Mrs. Price, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team Ms. Price may look familiar to you. She was introduced a few minutes ago with our Teachers of the Year, so tonight she's receiving double recognition. Mary Price is a 1st-grade teacher at Rocky River Elementary School. She was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Mrs. Price is an amazing person and an outstanding teacher. She has a way of making all..." and that's with capital letters. "She has a way of making all learning activities interesting, creative, and fun. This year in her class, my son has learned about layers of soil with pudding, cookie crumbs, and gummy worms." She has also taught her students about three-dimensional shapes using toothpicks and marshmallows. You're my kind of teacher. These types of fun activities are helping to instill a lifelong love of learning in my son. The parent added, "Mrs. Price always makes an effort to include everyone. For example, she brought in several boxes of Valentine cards and treats so that the children who had forgotten their own were able to participate in that activity." Mrs. Price, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for the care, compassion, and creativity you bring to your classroom and to your students, and we would like to thank you at this time.
athletic director, Mr. Brian Tyson, to the podium. Hey Brian.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Troy Gregor, and Elizabeth Olson, and Heath Gleaton, and Tyler Gomez, and Justice Cochrane, Tucker Wall, Wade Bessler, and Sam Jones to come up front, As you can see, we've had a great winter for Cabarrus County Schools athletics, as we've had eight state champions this winter. We'd like to say a little bit about each one of them. If you'd step forward when I call your name. Troy Gregor, is Troy not here? Okay, but I'm going to talk about Troy anyway. Troy is from Hickory Ridge High School. He is a senior. He won the wrestling state championship in a 126-pound class. He is also a two-time state champion, and he has an overall record of 170 wins and only seven losses. And he has a GPA of 3.34, and he is committed to wrestle at NC State next year. So we want to congratulate Troy in his absence. Elizabeth Olson. Elizabeth. She is a junior at Hickory Ridge High School, and she is a high-jump champion for indoor track this winter. Just a little background on her, she had no choice but to be great in the high jump as her mother is a four-time Big Ten high-jump champion, and her dad is the track coach at UNCC, which he was also an All-American triple jumper and a member of the 1988 U.S. Olympic bobsled team. So it's definitely in her genetics. She is the 2014 Charlotte Observer, All-Observer Indoor Track Athlete of the Year, and the All-Region Indoor Track Athlete of the Year. She has a final ranking of sixth of all female high school high jumpers in the U.S. She was also, last year, 2013, indoor and outdoor state runner-up. She is a three-time conference champion, an honor student, and scholar-athlete with a GPA of 4.2. Congratulations. Heath is a senior from Central Cabarrus High School. He is a wrestling state champion in the 120-pound weight class. Heath had a remarkable 50-0 record this year. So don't mess with Heath. I won't be nice to you up here Heath, okay? Overall record for his career at Central Cabarrus is 174 and 16, GPA of 3.1, and Heath is planning on wrestling and committed to wrestling at Appalachian State University next year. Next, we have Tyler Gomez. Tyler is a senior at J.M. Robinson High School, and he won a state championship in swimming in the 100-meter butterfly. Tyler has been all-conference for all four years. He is a scholar-athlete, GPA of 4.17, and he is committed to swim at Gardner-Webb next year. Next, I have Justice Cochrane. Justice, I've got about a paragraph and a half here on Justice. Justice is a senior who is anchoring the Concord High School swim team this year. He won the state championship in two events, the 100-meter free and the 200-meter relay. He was also a state runner-up in the 200-free and the 400-free relay. He is the 2014 SPC Male Swimmer of the Year, the 2014 Charlotte Observer, Cabarrus News' Male Swimmer of the Year. All-conference all four years, scholar-athlete ranked fourth in his senior class with a GPA of 4.64, and his future plans are to attend either the University of South Carolina or Wake Forest. Tucker Wall. Tucker is also from Concord High School. He is a junior. He won also state championships in two events also, is a 50-meter free and the 200-meter relay. He was also a state runner-up in the 400-free relay. All-conference all three years, scholar-athlete, and a GPA of 4.77. Next, I have Wade Bessler. Wade is also from Concord High School. He is a junior, state championship in swimming in the 200-meter free relay. Wade was an all-conference selection this year and is also a scholar-athlete. And last but not least, Sam Jones. Sam is another swimmer from Concord High School. These guys are loaded, and they only have one senior up here, so they should be the top pick for next year also. Sam is a sophomore, and he was a member of the 200-meter free relay state championship. And he is also a state runner-up in the 100-meter free and the 400-meter free relay. He has been all-conference both years, and he is also a scholar-athlete. And as you can tell, these athletes have done a great job on the field, or in your case, inside, right? Most of the winter time, but have also done a great job in the classroom too, and we commend you for that as well.
Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you Brian. And we will move on to 5.5, our Youth Art Month Superintendent Choice Awards, and we'll ask Dr. Shepherd to go to the podium with Ms. Rachel Wilks and Ms. Ann Burr.
Each spring, it's my honor to be able to select from among our best artists in the county, three awards for our Cabarrus County Schools Superintendent Art Award, and I'm always glad to welcome my partner and the Cabarrus County Educational Foundation in making this award, and tonight I would like to honor and thank Rachel Wilks for being with me tonight to make this great announcement. So Rachel, if you would.
Definitely. Well, once again, like Dr. Shepherd has said, the foundation is extremely honored to sponsor the Superintendent Choice Art Awards, and I'd also like to take the time to... So if you will please come down.
Can we see the picture?
Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward with our middle-school level winner for Superintendent's Choice. This year's winner is Aza Meaton-Meyer from J.N. Freeze Magnet School. Her artwork is titled Fire in the Sky, and her teacher is Meredith Farrell. Please come down. And our final category for Superintendent's Choice is from our high school level. And the winner is Jasmine Williams from Mount Pleasant High School. Her work is titled Daffodil, and her teacher is Katherine Highsmith.
Okay. Congratulations to all of our artists. And Ann, we will keep you at the podium for some Scholastic Art Awards.
Absolutely. Thank you. Tonight, I would also like to recognize the students that have achieved a Scholastic Art Gold Key Award, which is the first-place level of achievement as determined by the National Arts Alliance. Students, as I call your name, would you please come down front with your art teacher? First, we have, from J.N. Robinson High School, Rebecca Stanton. Rebecca is a regional winner in the Gold Key category in the area of drawing, and her teacher is Leann Jackson. From Concord High School, we have a team award. And the team members are Grant Conversano, Matthew Gluff, Matthew Alicia, Jordan Minor. They won a regional award for film and animation, and their teacher is Quinn Dion. Also, from Concord High School, we have Gabriel Hudson. Gabriel is a regional winner in Gold Key for drawing, and her teacher is Quinn Dion. Okay. So she's not here. We also have, from Concord High School, Jack Tackla. He received a Gold Key in the area of drawing, and his teacher is Quinn Dion. From Concord High School, we have Shelby Stockton. Shelby is a regional and a national award-winning student for drawing and for art portfolio, and her teacher is Quinn Dion. From Mount Pleasant High School, we have Skylar Crocker. He is receiving a regional Gold Key Award in the area of sculpture, and his teacher is Jacob Ford. Over the years, the awards have grown to become the longest-running, most prestigious recognition program for creative teens in the United States, and the nation's largest source of scholarships for creative young adult artists. When judging, panels look for works that exemplify originality, technical skill, and the emergence of personal voice or vision. All Gold Key winners automatically have their work submitted for the national level of recognition. Please join me in recognizing and congratulating these talented students.
Okay. Before we move on, anybody that's standing in the back, there's seats here in the front, if you'd like to come sit down. There are some seats up in the front. And we will move on to 5.7, academic scholarships. And we will welcome Ms. Donna Smith to the podium.
At this time, I'd like to invite Cameron Young, Trey Williams, and Shubham Patel to the front, please. We're gonna begin a new piece now. All three are seniors standing in front of me now. Many of our awards have been looking back at accomplishments that have been made. We're now looking at accomplishments that have been made in the past, but as seniors who are looking forward. Because at this time of the year, we start to move into next steps, called post-secondary work. And all three before you are very, very accomplished students. And as I introduce them, if you'll step forward so they can figure out which one you are, if you can. And at the same time, we're gonna identify the schools that they're from. Quite often, we recognize students from the high school, because that's where they're graduating. But it's interesting that all three of these have attended, from elementary through high school, all of Cabarrus County Schools. And that's exciting for us. I'd like to begin with Cameron. Cameron Young is a senior at Cox Mill High School, having been in Cox Mill Elementary, Harris Road Middle, and now Cox Mill High. He has officially been named by the U.S. Naval Academy for his next so many years of his life. Can we say it that way? The United States Naval Academy was founded in 1845. And the service academies, as they select students, look for those who excel in academics and scholastic achievements. They're athletically-minded and physically fit. And students are known as midshipmen. And as we will see, Cameron is gonna be an officer in training. Tuition, room, and board are fully funded by the U.S. Navy in return for active-duty service. The United States Naval Academy's graduates earn a bachelor in science degree and go on to serve in either the U.S. Navy or U.S. Marine Corps. We'll stay tuned to see which way you go. But the mission, I think, we need to remember is to develop midshipmen morally, mentally, and physically, and to imbue them with the highest duties or ideas of duty, honor, and loyalty in order to graduate leaders from the U.S. Naval Academy. He will be dedicated to a career of naval service and have potential for future development in mind and character, and assume the highest responsibilities of command, citizenship, and government. We salute you, Cameron. We now ask for Trey Williams to stand forward. I guess I should say, Devarian Trey. Can I do it that way? He is a senior at Cabarrus-Canaplis Early College High School, having been in elementary school at Rocky River Elementary, middle school at C.C. Griffin, and now, high school at the Cabarrus-Canaplis Early College. Before you stands a Morehead Kane Scholarship winner. This is an important scholarship, because it was established in 1951, and is actually the original Morehead, but it's actually the first U.S. merit program in the United States. That's big doings. In order to be selected, students have to demonstrate character, scholarship, physical vigor, and leadership. Morehead Kane will cover four years of expenses of undergraduate study, and is conferred solely on the basis of merit. And over four summers, we're gonna see that Trey will have the opportunity to complete outdoor leadership, public service, conduct research, and gain experience in private enterprise. We look forward to watching you, Trey, as you begin this next step of your life. Congratulations. And now, Shubham Patel steps forward. He's a senior at Mount Pleasant High, and he is a Benjamin N. Duke Scholar, having attended Mount Pleasant Elementary, Mount Pleasant Middle, and Mount Pleasant High School. Many of you may not be familiar with Benjamin N. Duke, but actually, he was a member of the Duke family, and wanted to ensure that Duke University retained its Carolina heritage by supporting students from the Carolinas to think for themselves and become leaders in the highest and best things in life, was his quote. And today, many of you may not realize, but prior to becoming Duke, they were known as another college. Do we know? Trinity College. So we're not gonna send you to Trinity, we're gonna send you to Duke. But what we want to talk about is, as a scholar, you will receive full support for four years at Duke University, the full tuition, room, board, and other mandatory fees. And there'll also be two summers of engagement, one in the Carolinas and one abroad. Benjamin N. Duke Scholars develop an understanding of what it means to partner with people rather than work for people. They learn to listen first and then speak, and they ground themselves locally in the Carolinas, even as they learn to engage in communities in the wider world. So for this, we will look forward to seeing our new Benjamin N. Duke Scholar, who is Shubham Patel. Cameron, Trey, and Shubham, I guess, represent right now many students in Cabarrus County who are earning scholarships. And we wanted to take this time particularly to salute these three. These are tremendous scholarships, and we look forward to your future. If you'll shake hands with our board. Thank you.
Congratulations. Wow, how impressive are those three individuals? Okay, section, or we'll move on to 5.8, and we'll have Ann Burr back. And welcome Ben Allred.
Absolutely. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to recognize our high school students who have been selected to attend the 2014 session of the North Carolina Governor's School. The Governor's School program is a six-weeks residential program open for rising juniors and seniors. It is the oldest statewide summer program for academically gifted high school students in the nation. The two Governor's School campuses are Governor's School West at Salem College and Governor's School East at Meredith College in Raleigh. Eight students this year from Cabarrus County have been selected to attend. Students, as I call your name, please come forward to be recognized by Mr. Allred. And please remain up front, and then we will have our school board recognize you. First, from Concord High School, we have Abigail Stoddard. Abigail is going to attend North Carolina Governor's School in the area of English. We need to have Mary Catherine Wallace come down from Hickory Ridge High School. She is going to be attending Governor's School in the area of math. Mia Powell from Cox Mill High School is attending in the area of natural science. Sidra Siddiqui from Cox Mill High School is attending in the area of natural science. Vikash Kumar from Hickory Ridge High School, natural science. Lauren Hunkley, Northwest Cabarrus High School, theater. And these are our 2014 Governor's School recipients for Cabarrus County Schools. Congratulations.
in the front if you'd like to come sit down. There are some seats up in the front. And we will move on to 5.7, Academic Scholarships, and we will welcome Ms. Donna Smith to the podium.
At this time, I'd like to invite Cameron Young, Trey Williams, and Shubham Patel to the front, please. We're going to begin a new piece now. All three are seniors standing in front of me now. Many of our awards have been looking back at accomplishments that have been made. We're now looking at accomplishments that have been made in the past, but as seniors who are looking forward, because at this time of the year, we start to move into next steps called post-secondary work. And all three before you are very, very accomplished students. And as I introduce them, if you'll step forward so they can figure out which one you are, if you can. And at the same time, we're going to identify the schools that they're from. Quite often, we recognize students from the high school, because that's where they're graduating, but it's interesting that all three of these have attended, from elementary through high school, all of Cabarrus County Schools, and that's exciting for us. I'd like to begin with Cameron. Cameron Young is a senior at Cox Mill High School, having been in Cox Mill Elementary, Harris Road Middle, and now Cox Mill High. He has officially been named by the U.S. Naval Academy for his next so many years of his life.